Okay, good morning. I'm gonna call the order that is, uh, we're with a work session. On the September fourth, twenty twenty four, the Perry's Board of Education. And, uh, Mr. Jurier, roll call, please.
Ms. Roland Miller.
Here.
Ms. Laramore.
Here.
Ms. Menke. Dr. Rufford.
Here.
Mr. Bennington.
Here. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, which we assume it's out there in the building.
Go here.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go ahead and skip the safety briefing, mostly because I'm closest to the door, so I feel pretty safe. And I have a motion to adopt the proposed agenda. Ms. Laramore?
Hi.
Dr. Rufford?
Nope, Rufford got it. She beat me.
Hi, this is my neighbor.
I'm being more forceful, my decision's Dr. Rufford has it. Roll call, please.
Oh, uh, Ms. Laramore?
Yes.
Dr. Rufford?
Yes.
Ms. Roland Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes, the agenda is adopted. Alright, Mr. Hustler, you superintendent's report.
Well, thank you, uh, very much, and, um, we have an annual, um, requirement to, uh, discuss, um, how we are planning to spend federal funds that we receive. Uh, Perry'sburg Schools receives, um, um, a small portion of federal funds. And, uh, in the past, we have, um, we have, um, asked folks to do this presentation, sometimes in January, mid-year, and someone pointed out, um, our school treasurer, um, and, uh, and Brent and Joe and Andrea, that, um, you know, we, we probably should move this up sooner so that people have a little bit of, uh, understanding of where those funds are going to be directed versus in the middle of the year when they're already, you know, somewhat committed. So that moved up when this takes place to, um, today. And, uh, with us, um, I'll turn it over to, um, Dr. Gussar and Mr. Sirens and Mr. Schwartz Miller, and they can kind of walk you through the presentation.
So we have, uh, you, you'll find two presentations in there. We're gonna go through the first one. And, uh, the first one will give an overview and the way some of the funds have been spent in the past. And the se- second one will sort of lead into, um, the way, what we're using the funds for this year. So this will talk about what it is, how it's determined, um, how does it provide support and gloss over some rules. So what is it? It's, it's a federally funded program. Um, and it's part of the ESSC Act. Formally, no child left behind. Uh, it's funding formula is based on free and reduced lunch. Uh, that magical October count week will determine our, our status next month for, for the upcoming year. And then services are based on at-risk, um, academics. It changes year to year. We find out in June, um, what our, um, statuses. We can either be targeted or school-wide. Um, we are typically targeted because, uh, the threshold for school-wide, we don't fall under. So targeted, um, what that means is we have a, a district percentage. For example, this year, our percentage is thirteen point one nine percent of our students are qualified for free and reduced. And so if a school is higher than that thirteen point one nine percent, um, then they could be a targeted school for Title I funds. We have to look at the lowest twenty-five percent population academically served. It has to fill in multi-criteria. In other words, we can't just take one factor. We have to look at across many factors and then we rank and order our students and serve our lowest, uh, our most needy students. Um, this is what it looked like last year. Um, we predominantly, we spend our money on people and getting people in front of students to work with students. Um, those are our tutors. Um, last year, we serviced, uh, the high school. Now, the one thing that I didn't say is that there is a previously served clause. So this year, how that's impacted, last year, Toth was a targeted school. This year, they're not. We have the ability to serve a school one year after they were a targeted school. So that's called previously served. We can't certain Toth the following year. So you'll see high school here. Two years ago, they were targeted. Last year, we could serve them. This year, we cannot because they haven't met the threshold.
But if they met the threshold, they could be back in.
Rules? So we send, uh, parents write no. We send contact letters. We have thirty days to notify parents of new students if we, uh, will serve them. Um, we get lovely surveys and audits. Uh, we're lucky to have Nancy Stowe run point on this because she is really good at knowing the red flags. The last thing we want is someone knocking on our door and having an in-person audit. And so we do many surveys and audits and she keeps us up to date. Um, her favorite line, right, Joe, is supplement, not supplant. Um, we cannot supplant or, or, or use these funds on things we u- we have spent with general funds. So we cannot say, okay, we wanna spend title funds on that when we previously have been spending it. And she keeps a good eye on that for us.
How that comes into play, though, once, if we're paying for something out of a grant, like our, um, Esser grants, soon as it comes back in the general fund, it can't be used for by a grant. So Nancy will look at our grants and sometimes and say, hey, this was paid for a grant last year. I have this grant I could use this year, as long as it stays within the grant. But soon as it comes in the general fund, it has to stay there. And the other thing is an aside to that is, we have to report every year our maintenance of effort. That is, um, let's say our, our, some of the dollars go up. We still have to show the district is spending at, at least as much as we did last year. It goes back to the, the supplant, so it's, there's a report. If we go down a dollar, they're asking why you're spending a dollar less than you did last year on this, on, for, for, for special education.
So if you've reached a cost-saving factor, you get penalized for that?
You could get penalized.
Okay, that makes no sense.
You're sometimes.
Am I missing something?
No, sometimes you just, oh, we have a, we have a high-class student that no longer here. There, there, you'll have to provide an explanation, but typically, they're questioning your, if, if your spending goes down, you're not maintaining your effort. You're not, so that's.
There's a couple of other things from a special ed standpoint that could go into that. So because we are continuously growing, it truly has never been an issue for us. But a lot of districts where enrollment's waning, they have to actually, like, fill out some additional paperwork to show that the reason they didn't meet that maintenance of effort is because their percentage of students with disabilities significantly decreased. So maybe that's a problem we'll have at some point. But, you know, I think right now, our, we're growing so quickly that, um, that's never been a situation where, nor, like Randy said, it could be that we've got a student that is, um, has intensive needs that graduates. And then we would be able to submit something to say that this significant cost is no longer part of the district. It's not that we're not meeting our obligation, we just no longer have that obligation.
Yeah, I think it was originally like a safeguard against, you know, cutting the, those dollars for the students that might not be able to better represent themselves like, you know, other students. So I think that's probably a little bit behind it, but.
I can see that.
Yeah, there's a little.
Making sure you're still putting forth the spent effort you worked for those specific kids that you did the year before. And not just be like, they're not making strides, so we're done.
We're off topic, but the, so Title I, what, what Brent just went over, that's about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year for us, which.
That's seventy-two million dollars.
It's rapid, it is. And there is, and we actually, I wouldn't say have a hard time spending it. We have a hard time spending it because of its limited uses. It's targeted. We can't spread, you know, if we could spread it across all the elementaries, we could spend it. But because it's targeted, we gotta stay focused with it, so.
That's why Nancy, I think, does a really nice job, too, because she oversees all grants that she, if we're talking about something and she knows it could go through Title, she'll make, she'd be like, hey, let's allocate funds this way versus spending it through maybe a different grant that has more flexibility.
Wow.
Let me jump in here. Um, so Title funds fall under, you know, like Brent said, federal funds. This is a breakdown of all of the different federal funds that, um, come to us as a district. So, you know, Title I A, um, the base, sorry, the basis, pardon me, the basic programs. Title III would be like our ELL. Title IV is the Student Support and Academic Enrichment Funds. And then the, what Randy was just talking about, maintenance of effort falls under, you know, the funds that I would manage, which is that IDEA Part B funds, um, used for excess costs for students with disabilities. So this is a breakdown of our plans for this upcoming year. Like Brent mentioned, um, we tend to allocate the majority of our funds to people and improving, you know, the services and interventions we can directly provide to students. I don't know if you guys wanna jump in the first couple, and then I'll jump in.
So for, for Title I, those go directly to students, directly affect students. So this year, our two targeted buildings are Woodland and Toth. And the, the, the third one is Junior High. So for those, you can see, we're spending, uh, four teachers. So that'll be, uh, two tutors at Junior High, I mean, at Woodland. Two reading special, or tutors, so those are halftime people. Another halftime person at Toth to help service those students. And then another half, uh, another one, another person halftime at the Junior High. So that's where we're spending, uh, spending those. Now, you also see non-pubs up there. We also have to, uh, split that money with some of our non-publics. So there are two, um, two schools, All Saints and Saint Rose, that also get funds. It's, it's not a lot, but we do have to distribute those funds to non-public schools because they have children that fall.
There, there, there are kids.
Yes.
Who are there. It's actually, it's only, it's only Saint Rose.
It's only Saint Rose this year, okay.
Well, it's, um, non-pubs that are located within our district boundaries.
So to clarify, we get the federal funding, Perryburg School District.
Correct.
As a school district, we have to provide the funds that were provided to us to a non-public school for those students that qualify.
Yes.
That chose to go to a private school.
Correct. And the, on top of that, we also have to administrate those funds, which means that Nancy, who works over all of our funds, is make sure that those funds are used appropriately, following the rules the federal government sets. So there are times where things get submitted to us from those non-pubs, and she says, no, you can't use those funds that way. So she is the gatekeeper for that. She does a phenomenal job of that.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty simple. If, if, if they wanna purchase something that could be used for Sunday School, construction paper, can't do it. Cause essentially, anything that goes to Saint Rose purchased these dollars are not Saint Rose's, they're Perry'sburg's. So if they bought computers with it, they're Perry'sburg's computers. So that we've bought, we've bought devices in the past, and Islamic Center was, uh, we've bought devices. When they decide to not have programs, we collect those back because we own them. So they're, there's, they're, so it's Perry'sburg's dollars is how I would look at it.
Right. But again, to clarify for the public, it's public school funds going to private schools.
Yeah.
That's what I wanna make sure is the takeaway.
Um, Title II, um, is used for staff PD. So, um, if we send staff to training, workshops, those kinds of things, and they reside in Toth or, uh, Woodland, those teachers are at those buildings or, uh, the Junior High, and they're affecting those students who are receiving Title I funds, then we can also pay for it out of Title II. So I'm gonna let you go ahead and talk about Title III because that's ELL immigrant.
Yeah, and, um, this actually falls under our student services sector of the People's Services Department. So Justin Foltz and Chris Harper are most directly involved in Title III funds. Um, again, it's in the grand scheme of our, of our budget. It's not a lot of money, but, um, it is funding that we're able to use for PD for, um, they do, you guys have probably seen, remember seeing emails and things in the spring for the family engagement that we did here at the Commodore. We had a, a large number of families come here and just able to connect with each other, connect with us as a district. Um, and then they also use some of those funds for support services as well.
And how are those funds determined? Like, how do, how are they, how? Let me rephrase it, like, yeah, how are they, how are they determined, like, the amount of money?
It's ESSC count.
Count of?
Students.
Students that qualify for English Language Learner Services.
Thank you. Um, and then four A is that your?
Student in Richmond.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry. Um, I didn't know I had to be Justin today, too. Um, so PD supplies and support services, so very similar to the ESL. Um, the last two are Special Education Funds. The IDEA Part B, Part B is the section of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act that governs school-age services, so for students ages three through, um, twenty-one. This is obviously our largest federal grant that we get. Um, it's based every year, like Randy said, for other things, on our yearly EMS count of students in our district. Um, we've historically allocated all, all, if not, or very close to all of the funds towards staff. So, uh, you guys, especially those on our board committee, um, that we've had in the past, know that, um, we've got a very large population of students with moderate to intense disabilities. So being able to allocate funds through the grant lets us look really closely at caseload ratio, staffing, making sure we have the right services in place for students. Um, same as the grants that Joe talked about, there's a portion that's required to go to non-public schools for providing special education. So, um, you know, Saint Rose gets a portion of those funds. They typically use them under the purchased services category, and they purchase special education services through the ESC of Lake Erie West. So that's how they fund an intervention specialist, speech pathologist. An interesting thing here with the non-pubs that comes up is that, and again, Nancy does an awesome job monitoring this, is that with the John Peterson Scholarship, you can't essentially, like, double dip in funds. So if a student's on an IEP through the scholarship, you can't necessarily use those same funds through IDEA. Uh, so that's, we do a lot of, we do a lot of consultation and have a lot of conversations with Saint Rose about, um, approved purchases and services. And they work with us to monitor how those funds are spent, the ESC bills, um, in a way, too, that we're able to do some cross-check and internal auditing as well.
Um, Andrea, can you clarify, school-age services? So school age to us is usually kindergarten and above. But by law, students with disabilities, school-age services starts, starts at age three. So preschool is required. It's not just because we want to have preschool kids because there's some notion of a, you know, fraction of the community wanting to know why we have to have a preschool.
Yeah, so pre, good, that's a great question. So preschool is required for students ages three and above who have been identified as having a disability under IDEA. So we're then required, uh, to write an IEP, service the IEP, um, and provide those services, which is why we have a preschool program. When you look at best practices for preschool, um, obviously, an inclusive model's always best. So we also offer preschool where typical students can enroll and come to our preschool as well. So we keep what we would call a fifty-fifty ratio, or at least half of our classroom is typically developing students, um, that are there as peer models, uh, attending our preschool. And then the other half are students on IEPs. All of our preschool teachers are certified gen ed and special ed. So they are actually able to serve in that dual role, which is really, um, it's really nice. And it gets, I think, a great preschool experience for not only our students with disabilities, but our typical students as well. Um, and then the other piece that's, that's nice with the, the grant funds is any teachers we allocate to be paid through this grant, we are able to cover. If they're out for PD and need a sub, that sub cost can go through there. If, because they, of the intensity of students in their classroom and their needs, if they would require six-period pay because they're working through an extra period for vocational instruction or something of that sort, that can be paid through the grant, if they're a teacher that's paid through here. Like Brent said, the, you know, it has to be a sup- supplement, not supplant. So we can't take someone who's been paid out of the general funds for years and all of a sudden pay them through the grant. Nancy does a great job, and she and I meet every summer and look at who's paid through the grant, how many fu- how many, um, dollars are allocated through the grant? Do we have any carryover from the previous year? And then we look at, um, who we're plugging into those slots to make sure that we're able to use the funds as effectively as possible. And then the last one is the IDEA ECSE, again, alphabet soup, Early Childhood Special Education Grant. This one has been around, gosh, probably only about seven years or so. It really is, has a focus on improving the social, emotional experiences for students at the preschool level. So we use this, part of this to pay a portion of the salary of one of our school psychologists at the preschool who does a lot of classroom coaching, intervention, um, behavioral instruction, things of that sort. Because she's paid through general funds and a grant, we have to do what's called time and effort tracking. So every year, she has to keep track per week of how many hours she's spending within each role to make sure that we're paying her appropriately. And that's something that we just have some internal systems that we track for that position. Questions for me?
Can I just add, um, sometimes getting, or getting notified in June can cause surprises or can be problematic. This year, it was actually, we found it as an opportunity, uh, because at the Junior High, we're able to provide support. But we also know, looking forward, looking at next year, they're gonna need extra Wilson reading support. And so we were able to do this year with, with the person we hired, is she's actually getting the Wilson reading training this year in preparation for next year. And, um, that is a reflection of us using Julia Lark here, one of our employees, as a trainer. And this individual going the extra mile and doing the practicum this year to prep for next year. So I just wanted to add back that sometimes it's problematic, but this year, actually, we're like, oh, this is great. Um, we can plan forward, so.
Yeah, just some quick definitions up here. The one thing I forgot to mention, as well, and Randy can expand on this, is when we're talking about funds we're spending for staff, it's not only, you know, their salary, but all of their benefits as well. So, um, that, when we're calculating up our budget for our grants, we're figuring out not only what is their take-home pay or in their salary, but also all of those retirement, fringe benefit types of things also. So, um, that is part of the number that you see up there.
Yeah, actually, when they audit some of these, they'll look at, you're paying salaries, they'll look at the salary-to-benefit ratio to make sure that, and line out. You don't, you could split, and sometimes we do that. We'll pay salaries out of a grant and benefits out of general fund if there's not enough money. You can't do it the other way around. It's just, you know. And, 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 and the, the threshold for a single audit now is, is, it was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal grants, you'd get a single audit in there. And you have to audit forty percent. Well, obviously, our IDA's a million dollars, so the IDA always gets audited. Um, Title I may or may not get, doesn't generally get audited because it's so small relative to everything, so, um.
Great, any, any questions?
ACT acronym, help me, LEA?
Local Education. Local Education.
Agency.
Agency.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Local school district.
That's us.
New term, thank you.
So that's, appreciate the awareness. It's always great to hear going after every dollar we can. It's great that we're looking at how to spend those, every dollar we can for the best, uh, in best service of our students. Uh, and it's great that it's monitored, you know, year after year, we hear how, if there's an audit, when there's an audit, like with the Saint Rose or whatever that, that term is, you know, that, that comes through clean, so, you know, well done.
And, and just so you know, so there is, these are federal grants, but they're, they're administered by the state. So you're, you're, you're at the mercy sometimes of a DEW and how they want to. Because, you know, all the money that the federal government allocates to Ohio doesn't necessarily get distributed to the schools that DEW decides how it gets allocated.
I've got like that little recall.
There's a level of bureaucracy in there that, um, but.
And we can repeat this, I'm gonna say, at the general meeting. But I have to say, between the teaching and learning meeting yesterday and then this meeting, the number of times that Nancy has been called out for being just crucial and a superstar. Um, I just, yesterday, we heard it a lot, and today, we just heard it a lot. I, I just wanna really, um, kinda lift her up.
What I was hearing is I would never want her job.
So compliant.
Well, I mean, you get that, this, these grants cross many departments, you know, so it's like teaching and learning. It's people services, it's both sides of people services, it's the treasurer's office. So I do think having someone that is that central person, like Nancy, to make sure that we're maximizing the use of those federal grants before we're tapping into other general funds or district, um, you know, departmental budgets is key because I know, for me, I lean on her a lot. And, yeah, she's very indispensable in that.
Yeah, and you gotta realize that district our size, fifty percent of districts in the state of Ohio don't have it. And Nancy, it's, it's typically falls on the treasurer's office or curriculum or someone else. If, if they have a curriculum person, assistant superintendent, could be a building principal, depending on what's going on, so. It's, it's highly specialized.
It's a lot.
A lot of paperwork.
And we have relatively, our amounts are relatively small. A million dollars is not small, but relatively, our size, it's not very, it's not much compared to other dis- other districts because the free and reduced number drives a lot of those numbers.
I would, I would say, Randy, that regardless of how much money we're getting, we still have to follow every single rule that the federal government.
Yeah.
Puts down on us, so, um. There's, you know, Nancy, Nancy is constantly, you know, she goes to meetings that the state puts on to understand the rules behind all these grants, and thank goodness she does. No, because she keeps all of us on the straight.
And the ultimate goal over years is that we have somebody knock on our door and give an in-person audit.
There you go.
You're, you're, you get them in the rotation, though.
She does a nice job, though, internally auditing and making sure we're compliant so that if that ever happens, we're not, you know.
But we don't trigger it.
No, for sure.
There's, there's three. There's a, there's a review, there's desktop audit, and then there's a stand-up. And we have one other federal program that doesn't fall on us, but food and service is a federal program also. And it follows the same rules. And if you'll notice, in all our budgets, we personnel, 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 we don't buy, um, capital items with grant money because then you have special rules. You gotta, you have to follow and, and tracking and it can only be used, so. And, and the point that, on the, um, the time and effort, we have to certify any person's being paid for a grant. There's, there's a certification that their only, that their time is being spent on the grant. So if I'm fully funded out of a grant, I can't, I can't be going doing these other duties. So I could be on grant duties.
Brooke, when you were principal at Woodland, were we, was that a Title I building?
Yep.
So that, that was one of the few times that we had a Title I building, which changed how those funds flowed, so we don't have it anymore.
Yeah. And generally, you have to be just particular, making sure, like, if you have, for example, a seventeen-hour reading teacher hired out of Title, you're not ever pulling that person to sub. If you don't have a sub, that person runs their groups every day to serve the students that they're funded to serve.
This is the fun side of our job, so we don't do this enough and make sure we're following the rules.
You want every dollar of it, and we hear about it as board members, too. Why are the district, the district going after every, you know, every grant, every federal dollar that they can get? And the answer to that is unequivocally yes. But as you guys have, have all just highlighted, it takes, you know, it takes effort to do that. It takes a lot to put that in place, and you need people to do that as well.
Yeah, and we meet quarterly as a team to make sure that we're coordinating efforts also. And again, that's, I think, a good time for us to just check in and make sure that we're meeting all of the requirements that are. And again, that's, I think, a good time for us to just check in and make sure that we're meeting all of the requirements that are set forth and, you know, following roles and procedures and meeting timelines. So that's, I, I think, at least I know for me, and probably speaking for these guys too, a nice time to know, like, we've got Randy and Kelly there, Nancy there, all of us are there. Um, you know, Brooke, and putting our heads together and making sure that we're being fiscally responsible with those funds, but also maximizing them.
And, and it's not a, it's not static, in fact, there's new uniform guidance coming out on grants, so, so. But some things are good, like increasing the threshold for bids and stuff like that, which don't really affect it, we don't bid things out of our grants, but.
Very good to see the agenda for a seven AM work session and the first side of this federal funds hearing. It's like, well, I don't know that I really wanna get up in that, but you really made it interesting. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Great.
Thanks, guys.
Maybe you guys are leaving.
Yeah, you don't wanna stay around.
You can stay.
Or you could, you could run along the wind. I've got a day full of meetings, so I'm going to exercise myself.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is, um, thanks, Joe. Next on the agenda is just a, a informational update on the replacement, um, operational levy. That'll be on the ballot November fifth, not sure if you knew, but will be on the ballot November fifth. Of course, you know that because you took action um to, to go to move, uh, to replace an expiring levy that was uh set to expire on uh December thirty first. And it's a two million dollar incremental levy, uh, and that's replacing a five-year incremental levy um that increased by um increments of one point five million dollars. Just a, 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 kind of a point of fact, the, the operating levy is just that. Those dollars are used to operate, they're the day-to-day expenses, it's salaries of our staff, it is fuel for our buses. Um, it is what we need to, to operate each and every day. The fund i- again, is, is replacing an expiring levy, it's not a bond issue. And I know there, as we begin to go out in the community and talk to folks, their life, so what, what's changed with the building project? Well, we don't have a building project that was decided, but what we do have is an operational levy. Um, included in that operational levy is funds in the five-year forecast that the board approved to buy trailers. So we will be doing that with this, um, but this is not a bond issue. This is just for operations. How schools are funded in Ohio, um, and we've talked about that, where, where there's been over eleven thousand school levies since nineteen seventy-six. Um, the way schools are set up, this is how you get additional money to keep up with uh growth, inflation, all of those kinds of things. So, um, and, and again, it's, it's not a, it's not a bond issue. So what will it cost taxpayers? And that's an important question. Um, so the projected maximum cost of the issue passed is four dollars and twenty cents a month per hundred thousand dollars of appraised home value. Um, and that would begin after the um, the second year of the levy. And, and that four dollars and twenty cents is what is projected um each year for the next eight years. So I wanna pause on that for a moment because that, that's a little tricky on a couple points. So incrementally, it will go up each year, the amount it'll go up each year is, is four dollars and twenty cents. So um, you know, for, for each month. But here's the thing, that we understand, that the um way the incremental levy works and why it's a benefit for districts like Perrysburg is as the community grows, the amount of mills, the amount of money that we need to get from homeowners to collect that dollar amount is reduced. And, and that's really an important factor because what shows up on the ballot and what some people in the community are, are kind of circling, this is what this levy will cost you. It's not necessarily accurate, because what that does is it assumes that this community in the next eight years will not grow a single dollar in value. And, and we know that that will happen because in the last five years, uh, this is what's taken place. The, what, what appeared on the ballot and what was finally collected over the five years represented um only sixty-nine percent of, of, you know, collecting what was on the ballot. Um, and you can see in the chart here that's displayed, um, in the black is what the ballot language said we would collect and how much it would cost a homeowner. And in the gold, you can see what it actually costs the homeowner. Um, and, and, you know, so that's an important distinction as we, as we talk about this. We have to use the valuations today because that's all that we have to project out what it'll take to collect that dollar amount eight years from today. So that's an important distinction with this. Also, in year twenty twenty-five, we're retiring um some millage from the high school bond issue. So that's one point eight five mills will retire, so keeping it to that monthly payment kind of calculation, five dollars and thirty-nine cents uh a month is coming off per hundred thousand dollars. So year one, your taxes won't change if this levy passes. And year two, the net school tax between the bond issue falling off and that four point, four dollars and twenty cents coming on is a net decrease in year two. So when you, when you frame it that way, I think it really helps. And then each of those years, we know our community is going to grow. And, you know, that is going to help lower that amount. So that's why this is a popular, um, you know, levy for growing districts. We know that we're gonna continue to grow and what this operational levy does is we wanna, you know, maintain that, that educational service, that, that, the level of achievement, the things that make Perrysburg Perrysburg in the classroom. We wanna maintain that, and that's what this levy does. It also helps us keep pace with growing uh population. And, and that, that falls into a couple categories, that staffing, that's additional teachers, it's additional desks or, or devices. And as I mentioned earlier, it's, it's trailers, it's, and it's buses, it's all of those things. Um, and, and we know that this is something that's gonna continue to grow. Um, as, as you can see here, an article from this past June about, you know, two hundred and eighty-four additional homes going in. Academically, we continue to do well, so what are people getting with these dollars? I think it's really important to remind folks they're getting a tremendous value, not only are we one of the top performing districts, but also in the state, on the state report card, that doesn't measure everything that we do. But when you look at other things that we do, from AP courses to national merit finalists, semifinalists, we continue to, to perform very, very well um against public and private schools. The impact, if we lose seventeen percent of our operating funding by this levy being defeated, um, that's thirteen million dollars. And so that educational experience of our students will change. And that's something that I think is important in this conversation because we talk a lot about millage, we talk about home valuations and uh, you know, appraise versus assess and all those kinds of things. But at the end of the day, if the levy fails, it will have an impact on the services that our students receive. And, and that's something that, you know, this levy is about protecting that, it's about protecting that, um, and maintaining that. So how that would work is, you're, you know, because the tax year is, is collected from January to December, our school year falls between two different tax years. So the first levy fails, um, we would implement over three million dollars of the cuts for that next school year. Because even if a levy of some sort is passed in that next year, we don't know what the board would decide with that levy, it could be less, it could be more. But regardless, we wouldn't be able to collect on that until the next January one, twenty twenty-six. So we lose a year of collection.
We lose thirteen and a half million dollars.
Right.
So if it doesn't, even if, even if you delay one year passing, cause you're never gonna make it up.
So, so phase one is, you know, what we need to do at the beginning of next year. And then there would be a phase two where we would look at what has to happen for the next school year. So, um, so if not replaced over time, to give you an idea, it would be roughly equivalent of a hundred and thirty positions. It doesn't mean we're gonna cut a hundred and thirty positions, but it gives you a sense of the scope of that. And that's like Fort Meigs and Frank going offline. I mean, that's about how many, you know, staff members. So the other thing too that it does is it has a, a definitely a ripple effect throughout the community. Because we know that communities that are vibrant, that are desirable, have a school system that continues to attract people. And with the, the um, loss of the levy, with the loss of, you know, staffing, programming, and most importantly, the impact that that would have on students' educational experiences, we know that people might look elsewhere. Right now, Perrysburg, people wanna be here, they wanna buy that home that goes up for sale. And we know that if, if the schools are struggling, people are gonna look at other options. And that desirability will certainly have an impact on home values. So again, what's at stake, um, thirteen point five million dollars, um, seventeen percent of our budget. The staff equivalent of, of two buildings, you know, going away. Um, and, and most importantly, the impact on programming in the classrooms. And um, you know, we know, National Board of Realtors, direct correlation between excellent schools and property values. So what, what you're getting for those dollars is, is a huge value. Because most people live in the community, don't have children school-aged, or their kids have grown. And, and, you know, we're asking them to do something that's challenging right now, and that's to raise their taxes. But what are they getting for that is a tremendous value, which does impact probably their number one investment, which is their home. So um, that's what this, this is all about. So um, don't know if you have any additional questions or thoughts or comments, but just wanted to, to give you an update as we move forward. With staff, we're doing a master class, we're calling it. So if people are really nerdy and, you know, are intrigued by school funding and levies, we're offering an opportunity to kind of do a deeper dive, so to take this presentation, take that next step. So um, Brooke and Randy have helped shape this presentation that will roll out, um, actually today, so. And uh, find out what people wanna know so they can be better informed.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, as, as, as I'm out there, the, the, it's that math exercise right now, which, which is where most of my conversations have been had. You know, and, and I really appreciate this board taking a look at the various levy options and, and saying, to your point, Mr. House, the, the incremental levy is the one that works best and dovetails into everything that I know, that I believe has happened in this community, cause you see it with your own eyes. I've sat down and talked to people about where that growth is coming and the fact that that, that growth is coming. We've heard city council in our conversations with them say, you know, the, the, they're full on with the gas pedal in that growth. And, and so that's gonna continue to come. And I see the increase in, in the uh, valuations in my own neighborhood of homes that are being sold and such, so. You know, that growth is coming, that increase in valuation will continue. So you put in a, a levy that is designed to more equitably share in that increased real estate tax as that growth occurs. I actually went through, cause it's just, it's just not, it is, what I wanna characterize, it's an opportunity for learning when somebody just says, well, you gotta take the, the, the ballot language and multiply that and figure out what the impact is on my real estate taxes over eight years. That's just not how the math works, it's not how the math works. I actually took my, uh, cause I am one of those geeks that likes to, is that word nerd, or whatever the word is? I am one of those guys that took the Excel spreadsheet and I said, here's what I'm paying in taxes today. Here's that four twenty, that millage, times my assessed value. I then layered in assumptions for that decrease in millage over time. I don't have my computer with me, I'm not gonna share the numbers, cause I don't wanna be misquoted here, but, you know, even when I saw what that impact was over eight years in total, I saw the value. When I divided that by eight, even said, this is kind of the average increase, cause there's no doubt, nobody's gonna shade the fact that it isn't an increase in real estate taxes, but when you take that amount, and say, here's the amount per year, you know, giving up a couple dinners a year, things like, things, things like that, I know that isn't easy for everybody. But again, when I say the value that this district gets and the value that I know I'm gonna get on my home over those eight years is, is more than worth it, so, which is, again, I wanna keep this to the math exercise. Kind of moved my advocacy there a little bit, but the math exercise says that this is the best option for a district in growth mode.
Yeah, one, one thing we've not talked about is that if we did, if we did a traditional more, uh, uh levy where you just do, you're not doing the incremental, instead of asking, you know, starting off at nine point seven three mills, we need something like twenty million, so you're looking at over, asking for um sixteen or seventeen or eighteen mills, right? Over whatever time period, so we're starting at nine point seven three and, and builds versus asking for fifty percent more level over, over time. That's one of the things, the incremental is, is so appealing because you think about it, that the math is more complicated. But we're not, you're not asking for the money until you need it.
That, that, that's a good point, thanks for raising that too, cause that was another reason, that, that, there's so many good reasons why this board put the levy in place as it did. That's another one, the money comes in as the district needs to spend it. It's not coming in earlier than when it's needed.
So can I request at the, at our board meeting, that we actually do this live or in a display like, here's the tax bill, I don't care, you can use mine, everybody has this public, but here you go, here's a real live person. This is where you look, this is what you do, this is like what you just said, step by step by step, because I don't think people understand what's gonna happen really truly when we grow in the eight years.
Yeah.
And how it goes down, you know, and we already know what's coming, cause we already know what the city has approved for building just recently. God only knows what's gonna happen in the next seven years, uh, because we already know like how much, you know, how many houses are available, how many land, you know, pieces of land, that kind of thing. But, you know, so we, they can see it, because again, what you said, it's like, you know, they're taking the whole, not understanding the growth piece, and where we're, where we're getting that. So I really think that if we can do that, you know, put something in the messenger, put it on the website, like actually somebody doing step by step. Here you go, step two, step three, step four, this is what it's gonna look like.
That'd be a good little video to put on the website if Rachel could do that, because people, you know, I don't know if we can do that in a minute.
Well, we could, we can, we, we, we could literally do a, um, I got Loom, it's a soft, I could do the property search, pull up the tax bill, cause the only thing it shows on there is what your discount is. So, so we talked about full rates, most people are not paying full rate, their, their tax bill's discounted.
But I, I just feel, cause like you said, you're a math person, I'm not a math person. I mean, even though this is, you can figure this out, but if you have the step by step, I think that's gonna be very helpful for people. Um, you know, cause it's right there, we're being transparent, this is what it looks like, here's what your tax bill is, people are still not understanding the assessed value versus this value. And just so we can have it laid out so people can see it, not in a paragraph form, cause I don't do story problems, but in step by step, by step, by step.
Kindred spirits.
Story problems, you see those words, I'm like, shut up.
Yeah.
No, I don't wanna know how many apples and oranges to compare, I just want A, B, C, D, E.
Or which train coming from a different direction, it's like, shut up.
You know, not too much, just a simple, you know, how, not the simple, but you know what I mean, where we can see it, people can do it themselves.
So then, my instinct of reading that letter in, in the paper last week, I couldn't put my thumb on it, I couldn't have been able to explain, but there was something wrong, inherently wrong with the calculations on there, I mean, it was close, it was a valiant effort, but it was, it was off, right?
The logic was really weird, the, the numbers were close.
The numbers were accurate.
Yeah.
It's that it doesn't recognize the expected decrease of the millage.
Yeah.
And so that really is the maximum, but not the expected cost.
And the other thing was, he had the increment in the first year, there's no increment, there's no ch- there's no change in the first year.
That's what I thought, and then the second year goes down.
The numbers, the numbers match the ones that I ran. So I have to say, I think his calculations were accurate, it's just that it's, we don't, we don't expect that, that he's gonna have to actually pay that much money over the next eight years.
And he was off by two million though, it's not gonna, it's gonna collect two million dollars less than what? Cause you're, you're collecting two, you're collecting seven years. Because you're you're collecting two, you're collecting seven years, not eight, of the increment. So you're, oh, so at the end, you collect twenty-seven and a half approximately, not even.
The the chart up here just shows, you know, so we're talking about the future, which I think is really important.
Yes.
But also, let's look at what we just experienced with an incremental levy over the last five years. And you can do kind of exactly what Dr. Ruffert was saying. Here's what was on the ballot language, here's what people actually paid, um, this is what it collected. And and again, it's, it grew one point nine five mills over five years. But according to ballot language, it was to grow six point three mills. And and it did. So so that assumption that this is exactly what you're going to pay in eight years.
It's the, yeah, it's a third in the sixth columns that I would love to see next to each other. Because that's the, that's the difference that we're talking about.
That was essentially how I modeled it, you know, I I took the previous history, these five years. And I said, you know, year one, it went down, you know, uh, of ballot versus effective, it was down, not a lot, you know, a couple percentage points, but as you went through, it it went down to that sixty-nine percent. And then I stopped the growth because this is five and we had projected out eight. And I said, after year five, there is no more growth, which I know that's the, that's not a true statement in my model, but it was conservative and I still got a much less number.
Yeah, you're going to, in in the eight years, we're going to have an update year and another reappraisal year.
And and Randy, forgive me, I don't recall, but the the ballot, the the millage for next year is nine point.
Seven three.
Which is less than what people are collecting today.
The nine seven five, yeah.
And that's, that's as of today.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
It'll actually probably be less.
Even lower.
Yeah, well, yeah, I haven't started the nine seven three.
So we're already beginning to see that as an example of what was collected, what's on the ballot. And then what actually will be collected will even be different. And it's trending in the right way.
It's like, yeah, certainly debate the 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 theory of school funding and what's, you know, going on in the state and what's worth and what isn't worth it. But let's at least start by getting the math right, understanding how this kind of works.
It's not pretty, I mean, it's just, it's common.
Right, it's, it's not, but I think.
I think it's fun, but it's not.
You're a sick person.
But I do think this whole conversation really points to one of the places that we began our discussion about what the appropriate structure was and the amount. Is that we 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 are looking long term, we're looking, this allows us to plan. I've talked to a lot of people that have said, well, you should just be asking for what you have now. And I said, and then in two years, we would have been back and you would have told us that we didn't look ahead. And this eight-year, um, you know, arc is really, is is um part of the reason that we have this structure on the ballot. And I think that that, it it, that planning allows everyone to plan, allows people to plan for their taxes, allows the board to plan for the future of the district.
Good point.
Any other comments, questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. House. That takes us item five, the consent agenda, the consent agenda covering items sixty-nine of the agenda. And I have a motion to accept the consent agenda. Ms. Minke and Ms. Laramo.
Just a statement if that's possible. So on on the agenda item, it talks about a billboard lease. We're not taking out a billboard, so just to be clear. So I did update the notes. We have a billboard on one of our properties on one ninety-nine, and this is the lease agreement to allow it to to be there. So if the board would be so inclined to have a billboard, um, we could talk about that, but that's not what this is.
No, and it's it's changed ownership and they're cleaning up their paperwork.
Yeah, and the second.
We make money off of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we make a little bit of money off of that.
Yes, yes. The second item is the bus routes. I did get a question from a board member. I have the answer, um, but I left my phone in my car. I double-checked my jacket, but I hung up in my office during the board meeting. I'm like, maybe I put it in there, I don't have it with me, so. But, um, I can follow up with that information, like I had it early this morning, so.
We're not probably being offered the routes for that time, are we?
No, no, our transportation partner goes to bed.
Eight hundred pages of it.
Eight hundred point twenty, yeah.
I opened it up last night, I'm like, wow.
Yeah.
That we have eight hundred some pages of bus routes.
Yeah.
Yes.
God bless her.
We take, we take more buses to a football game than many districts have in their entire fleet, so.
Right. Wow.
And we have a, um, there was a call last week, a neighboring district is struggling with bus drivers significantly. And was talking to Courtney Parr, Transportation Director, about borrowing our extra drivers because we're in a place where all of our routes are filled and we have subs. And so the work that was done, Don did a tremendous job of really advertising Courtney with her creative ideas, with, you know, getting people behind the wheel of a bus. You know, not, not, not that we want to curse ourselves, but where we are today versus where we were really shows a great effort on many, many parts to to get us there. In a time where it's still a struggle. So anyway, I wanted to clarify those, do you think?
Thank you.
And I will follow up on the specific route piece, I'll take my phone. I feel like a high school student in Perrysburg right now, where the phone is out of my reach, thirty miles. Thank you.
Yes, yes, I consider what pictures that the board was to put up a billboard, what pictures we'd use. So that would certainly be a point in our next discussion. Any other conversation on the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Ms. Minke.
Yes.
Ms. Laramo.
Yes.
Ms. Roland Miller.
Yes.
Dr. Ruffert.
Yes.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes, consent agenda passes. I intend any board, any board discussion on new topics?
Just a heads up that I leave Sunday for um CASPA, which is the Consortium of State School Board Associations. There's twenty-three, twenty-seven states that are part of it. Ohio is one, I'm one of two representatives from Northwest Ohio, Chris Farwick is the other. And we leave Sunday, so if you have anything that you, federal ideas that you would like me to personally hand to our federal representatives, let me know, um, probably by Friday, so that I've got Friday night that I can work on it, Saturday to compile it and pack, and Sunday to dash out the door. I've never, I've never done this before, so it'll be interesting and I'm going with a seasoned professional. So, um, I'm, I'm kind of excited. We've actually got three people from Northwest Ohio that will be there. Tom Patterson from Sandusky is also attending because he is our next OSBA president. So Northwest Ohio is usually the duck that never gets noticed. And we've got three people from Northwest Ohio that will be there. And we've got a really good president coming up, so it'll be fun to be, seeing how he runs OSBA boards because he's, he's an incredible man.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. We'll see how this goes, hopefully you don't see me on the news.
Are there any specific issues that they are pushing for?
Yes, um, actually, I, big note, I can send you the link to, they've got, the consortium has seven boxes, seven topics that they're interested in. I can send that to you if you'd like to look at it. And so there are seven things that they're advocating for, and I sent that to some of our department heads and to Tom and Randy, of course. To get information, I have been going to various schools throughout Wood County doing presentations and also, oh, thank you.
All right here on their website.
Yeah. And letting them know, it's, I don't know if it's the discouragement of trying to reach a federal representative and that nothing ever seems to happen. I don't know, but I'm not getting a lot of response, which is, uh, yes, that's.
Disappointing.
Yes, all that, all of that, all of that, yes.
If you go to their website, there's a lot of great information and their priorities for advocating.
And it's, it's easy to read because they've got it in a box. So if that box isn't in your area of interest, you don't have to read all the gobbledygook associated with that box. So you can go down to the box that interests you. So that's, that I thought was nicely done, how they did that. It's not like opening up late at night a eight-hundred-page document and going, oh my gosh.
Thank you, probably more to come to that, come on this too, we do the run-up to Capitol Conference in November, so.
Oh, and I went to the legislative update, which was for, um, everybody in the Northwest District, the Northeast District and the Central District. So we had roughly fifty-some odd counties represented that was in Sandusky. And that was, okay, you're, you're on par with with uh good adjectives here, Laurie, today. I'm trying to come up with a appropriate adjective for how that was mind-blowing is a good one.
Overwhelming.
Overwhelming is another one, disappointing, scary, um.
Alarm.
The alarming, yes, that was, that was the last one. And that's just mostly state. Nicole Piscatani does and Jennifer Hope do an amazing job of advocacy for our schools. And what I'm trying to do is coordinate her presentation with my notes. Once I get that compiled, I want to send that to you so that you can see it. There's one bill that, because we're in a lame duck session right now. So there's one bill that's floating out there right now that Senator Brunner had. It's a whopping two paragraphs long and it makes no sense, shocking. And she said, no.
I'm shocked by that.
It was on the floor, just canceling. But these are, this is what I have suddenly found myself getting involved in and it's really, really cool. It may, it opens up my eyes as to what our enrollment in OSBA provides for us. The advocacy that they do, the um, the training that they do, the help they offer us is is beyond measure and worth every penny that we put forward to it. You can pick and choose and take what you want out of it, it's really an a la carte type of thing. But this has been a real eye-opening experience, so give me some time, it's a little overwhelming. Her PowerPoint was forty-two slides long. And she was, not me, that PowerPoint that you did for the city. And and just, and and that's what she had to do because our meeting went too long and she was having to rush through it. So it was, it was a lot, it was a lot. So as soon as I can get that pulled together, hopefully before I leave, I'll, I'll get that sent out to you.
Appreciate that, thanks for tracking all of that for us and for representing us within the district as well as throughout the state soon. Any other comments, any other new business? Seeing none, hearing none, if there's an injunction, I move that we adjourn. We're adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you.